They wasn't online.
Wasn't online?
No, I know. I went to print it out.
Call the meeting to order.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you will please do roll call.
Nola?
Here.
Renee?
Here.
Carrie?
Here.
Gerald?
Here.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Here.
And we do have one adjustment to the agenda, which is an oversight from me. We had the property we've been talking about on Goose Lake for bidding. I forgot to put it on this schedule, so I would request that we add it after item 22, the land bid opening for the Goose Lake property. And do we have a motion to approve the agenda with that in mind? Nola makes the motion. Carrie seconds. Do we have any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say motion. Motion carries. Next, we have the approval of the past meeting minutes. Do we have a motion to approve?
Make the motion to approve.
Carrie makes the motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Renee seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Next, we have the treasurer's report. Do we have a motion to approve the treasurer's report?
Make the motion to approve the treasurer's report.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Renee seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Carrie?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
Nola?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Next, we have the ten of the bills. Do we have a motion to pay the bills?
I'll make a motion to pay the bills.
Renee makes the motion. The second.
A second then.
Nola seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Renee?
Yes ma'am.
Nola?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Next, we have the fire department report. If you would, Chief Stiles.
Thank you, sir. As you see in the packet, 60 night requests, six minutes and 11 seconds. It's almost two minutes under the national average. The guys have just been getting hammered. We've really got beaten up pretty hard this spring with the lot of land fires. We put on social media, continue to put on social media to please check the state no burn site and advise people as such. They don't. I will tell you, on the last three that we've had, all three of those people who did burn, even if it was brush in a peril or a pit, have been fined. And the fines can be anywhere from $125. Fines from the DNR up to, the judge includes that, up to $1,000 for violating it. If they do do that, the judge can ask for us to put in restitution. We haven't yet, but it is what it is. But I'm begging all the citizens, please, check the website. If you don't know, call the fire department. We'll be happy to tell you. But please, again, today is another no burn day, and we're out again. I don't understand. I get it. It was beautiful, but you're killing us. We actually had an incident that communicated to a house. It wasn't ours when we were mutual aid, but they were short-staffed and our guys took a beating for about three hours on something they really didn't take a beating on, but because somebody wanted it to, as he put it, to us buck the system. It is what it is, but I kept my composure as best I could. I got in the staffs, done a phenomenal job. I did talk to the three elected. Obviously, we had that little issue with our squad. We thought it was the fuel pump, which is going to be a significant cost. It is not the fuel pump. It's the lift pump that goes to the fuel pump, which was significantly less. He's hoping to be out here in the next half hour to get the, we got a new part to get fixed. The staff has, again, just done a great job. We did start our pre-build meeting via Zoom for the new heavy rescue, and we'll be working on that with more to follow on that, and we'll give anything we can from the board. If there's nothing else, that's all I have. Unless you have questions for me.
Thank you very much. And if you do need to step out to work in their fair assigned point, go ahead.
No, these are canned. Guys, just take it away.
And recognizing that we arrived, you have our planning commission report.
Do. Sorry for tardiness. On, let's see, April 27th, those last planning commission meeting. There's a smaller meeting. Two residential solar panel areas were approved for their residents. Then there was some unfinished business of set plan review for minis storage units on Fulton Road there going in. The owner was here, answered some questions that the commission had, and approved upon further review of the, I think the road commission had some things they were doing for traffic for Fulton Road. And then we also reviewed the minimum floor, ground floor area requirement. We looked at removing the 680 square feet because of a certain style of house that's being, looking at being built where there's a garage on the ground level. And, let's see, the last thing was a motion for a public hearing to change accessory building number from two to four, but keeping the square footage requirement in all residential
All right. Thank you very much, Lee. Next, just a small comment before we dive into agenda items. In our working session, we did determine that I have not run the meetings quite tight enough just because of my own personal preference and that with the idea that hoping that agenda a little more strictly and having things slightly more organized and structured will work better for the meetings, especially for keeping minutes. And that is definitely true. We also changed from having working sessions, because we were spending so much time as a board in session, to having decision items as part of the meeting and the discussion items later in the meeting. And that will allow us to give those a decent amount of time if the decision items go quickly or a shorter amount of time, depending on how long the meeting has been up to that point. We will hold six hearings in this single meeting, so that'll be quite a lot. And on the lakes and the roads, people will be able to speak as part of public comment for each of those hearings. Other than that, and the business license, we will allow the person that it pertains to to speak on the business license. Other than that, if someone would like to comment before we go into the agenda on any other agenda items, the first public comment would be the time. There will be a second public comment after everything has occurred for the board discussion. The microphone is on at the lectern. We did discuss people in the same working session speaking from their seats. We have a strong tendency for that to happen here, partially because we're a medium-sized township that's been growing from a small size, and it's not too big of a problem in a small township. But also, I think there's a decent amount of fear of walking up to the lectern and it feels kind of odd, like a public speaking moment. Nevertheless, I would like to encourage that if someone has a comment to say that they do walk up and make the comment from the lectern. And if they would like to do that, now would be the time. State your name and address if you would as well.
Jessica Kidder, 1547 Duck Lake Road. Technically do not live in Dalton Township. However, one of the items on here does apply to me. It's the business license. I drive past this business almost every single day, and there's issues there. They are in violation of many of our ordinances. They block the traffic visibility for danger. I have an SUV, and I can't see around the corner because they have their vehicles too close to the corner, which is not in line with the ordinances or MDOT or anything. It's curved for a reason. It's a curve. There needs to be a boundary of where they have their stuff. There are trailers on the property, also a violation, but have been allowed at this point. There's a house on the property that the township here had decided to not follow through in the condemnation process because the purchaser of the property promised to do so. That person still does not own the property. They were given a little bit of time to try and get that handled. It wasn't able to be done at this point. It still appears to be in the current owner's name. I don't see how the board can believe that giving more time is going to solve any of the problems. He's been almost owner for two and a half to three years. I think that's enough time as a business owner to take control of the property that you own, take control of your situation. COVID may have thrown a small wrench, but that doesn't give you the right to be in violation and cause safety hazards or safety concerns. The tires in the woods, whether they're cleaned up entirely at this point or not, that's a DEQ violation. I've spoken to many neighbors that also have concerns. They've come to the township as well. It's affecting values if they want to sell. They're choosing not to sell right now because of it. Or any of the vehicles that are in the woods or in the driveway or parking lot, wherever they are, are they leaching into the ground and affecting the water for the people that are neighboring or even the blueberry fields? It's all a huge concern, and I think the township needs to take all of that into consideration. All of the neighbors agree that it's an issue. So if the township chooses to continue to give more time to people in violation, even after already working with them, we're all ready to move on to basically a higher power. We can turn it into the DEQ, and hopefully they'll take a little bit more action, albeit they can't handle all of the issues that are there. So I hope that the township will take all of that into consideration before they determine whether or not they're giving additional time. Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's any other public comments at this time?
I have a nice story, Barnes. Agenda item looks like 22 because of land sale request off Russell Road. Because you guys are new, I felt I needed to come here and get you up to speed. This particular property, trying to sell an easement on one of the paper roads has been requested by not only Chris Hall. When he left, there was an appointed supervisor named Jerry McIntyre. The same people came in and attempted to get it done with him. Did the same thing when I first got here, and now they got an entire new board, and they're doing it again. If you open that Pandora's box and sell the easement on these paper roads, you're going to open up every one of these paper roads. We have hundreds of them. You can see them on the map up there. We have hundreds. So before you approve this tonight, this land sale for, off of Russell Road, I believe the property question is with the Cross family. I would request that you look in the file. I request that you at least talk to the attorney about this, because there's plenty that's been said. It's been going on for six years. If anybody wants to access that property, just like anyone else in that sector, you have to approve Lakewood Road between Russell and Staple. There's about, what, a half mile, a mile that's not paved, maybe a little more than that, I guess. But that's the drop that they got to get to that property, not buy the paper roads that we own as residents in this community. The paper roads are owned by all of us, and once you open it, we can't afford to keep maintaining them, and the meatloaf calls are going to kick in. Everybody around those properties are going to request them to sell me the easement to get to my landlocked property. None of us told them to buy that landlocked property, and now they want us to pay for it. So my request is that we deny that particular land sale, which is number 22.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Jim Cross. I'm the guy he's talking about. I have for, so I live in, pardon, in for Winbrook Avenue Southeast in Catwood. I have 50 acres back in the middle of that woods that's between Putnam and Russell Road. I've had it for years. I've been, as you said, wanting to retire, wanted to build my retirement home there for years. I've been before this board, or previous versions of this board, and have hit a wall for years. It's zoned residential, R1. And the only thing that's keeping me from retiring here and building my home is that the township owns the land between my property and Russell Road. And I'm not asking for any, but I'm asking to purchase a strip of land that gives me the legal access so I can retire here and build my home. And I'll pay the value of it, and I'm just asking to be able to build a home in the retirement here and join the community. And I've just been hitting wall after wall for years, and I'm appreciating that for the first time, it's, I'm starting to feel like it's, like the community wants me, or is willing to consider having me, and I appreciate that very much. So I'd like for you to consider to please make that available and give me a chance to buy. Thank you.
Hi, Ron Van Mullen. Thank you for the chance to speak. Like to address several things that Mr. Martin and I spoke about in a meeting at my facility. First, I'd like to address the concerns that were just posed on my business at Quarter 185 Wayall Road. I understand that for some people, it may seem to have been an ongoing process that we've been working on, and times have been extended and extended. For me, that has not been the case. By first, the first time the township came to me with any concerns of violation was just a few months ago. I played orison, stopped in, said, hey, I gotta complain about tires out back. What are you doing about it? I said, I understand this concern. We've been trying to. It's very expensive to get rid of them. They were dumped on me when I purchased the property. The purchase agreement stated that they were to remove any and all hazardous waste, including tires, and leave all tools and equipment inside the building. Fortunately, they did just the opposite. They ripped every piece of equipment and tool down in the building. They left me with 10,000 used tires out back that have been accumulating since 1972, when Brad Semenbauer first opened the place. They left me with crap everywhere. It has been an ongoing process. We have not ignored it. We have not been trying to. We've not been pushed under the gun with the township until very recently, but I've already removed over 8,000 tires from the property. There's only just a handful left. Those will be gone within the coming weeks. We're working on it. We're working on everything. The place was an eyesore. You know, I bought it with expectations, but I wanted to invest almost $30,000 over the purchase price to put equipment back in there so we could work. You know, that left, money's very tight. I haven't been able to snap my fingers and make things happen, but we've been making progress every single month since April of 18, when I bought it. We lost almost all of last year. COVID hit. I had a contract to have that house removed. COVID put a stop to it. Not only could the contractor that was going to do it, he couldn't get licensing and whatever permits he needed to do it at the time. I was running out of money, trying desperately to keep my employees on the path, because being quote unquote "an essential business" and allowed to be open, we didn't qualify for any of the extra help that the state was giving out. We couldn't get the PPP loans, any of that. But I've got three families besides my own that depend on me for their jobs. So what little savings I had left went to my payroll. And I almost went bankrupt, but I held it together and was still there. And we're working again and making an income, and the tires are disappearing. We repainted the front of the building. We put up a new fence. I mean, we are an auto repair facility. We're going to have broke down cars. It's the nature of our business. But I did put up privacy fence. I'm in the works to get even more put up so what we do have to have for the nature of our business isn't seen by the general public from the roads. You know, the issue with the quarry, it has been an issue several times. Again, we're an auto repair facility. Wreckers come in, they dump cars in the first spot they can find. They've often done it too close to the corner. We move them as soon as we can. Couple of times, a plow guy came in and plowed overnight, put snow pile up too close to the corner. I've had to pay somebody to come in with a loader and take that down. We don't do it on purpose. We don't allow it to happen. Sometimes it happens, but we take care of it. The bottom line is I've committed not only to this business, I took it over to help somebody from your own community out to begin with. He was losing it. I bought him out. Brad is sick. He still is. Couldn't work. We continually and are committed to continually making it better. We want the place to be a place the community can be proud of, not pissed off over. I'm committed to that, committed to the community as a whole. I do my best. It's all I can. Improvements, more improvements are on the way. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, we will move on to our agenda items. The first one is twin length special assessment resolution 2021-20. And this is the second step for the weed control treatments, specifically on twin length. So I'm going to hold the hearing for all six of these first items, but I will declare this hearing open. And specifically on weed control treatment for twin length, we will now take public comment if anyone wants to make a comment on it. Seeing none, I will close public comment on this. And do we have any other discussion from the board? No. I will close this hearing. And now, do we have a motion on this item?
I make a motion to approve the special assessment resolution 2021-20 for weed control treatment.
Do we have a second? Gerald seconds. Do we have any other board discussion? Hearing none. Let's roll call a vote.
Carrie?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Nola?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes ma'am.
Lee?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Motion passes. The next item is Middle Lake Special Assessment Resolution 2021-21. And this one is that same step, step number two, but it is for Middle Lake. So I will declare this hearing open. Do we have any public comment on the weed control treatment for Middle Lake? Hearing none. I'll close public comment. Any other discussion in the hearing? Hearing none. We'll close the hearing. And do we have a motion?
I make the motion to approve the special assessment resolution 2021-21 for weed control treatment on Middle Lake.
Do we have a second? Gerald seconds. Do we have any board discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Carrie?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Nola?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes ma'am.
Lee?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have Brock Cat Special Assessment Resolution 2021-13. These are in private roads that we have had discussion about in previous meeting and in previous working session. And we will hold a meeting on each of these hearings, so I will declare this hearing open. Do we have any public comments on Brock and Cat Private Roads Resolution? None. I'll close the public comment. Any other discussion in the hearing? None. I'll close the hearing. And do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve special assessment resolution 2021-13 as a second step for Brock and Cat.
Do we have a second?
No second.
Gerald seconds. Do we have any discussion? I will say that we did not receive 20% of written objections that we would need to in this. Makes sense. Roll call vote.
Carrie?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Nola?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Next, we have Brock Cat Special Assessment Resolution 2021-14. And this is step three of the four-step process for special assessments. I will declare this hearing open. Do we have any public comment on this one? Hearing none. I'll close public comment. Any comment during the hearing? I close the hearing. And do we have a motion? Gerald makes the motion to approve the special assessment resolution 2021-14.
A second.
Renee makes the second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Gerald?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes ma'am.
Nola?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Next, we have the Johnson Special Assessment Resolution 2021-15, which is the second step for Johnson. I will call this hearing open. Do we have any public comment on Johnston? Seeing none. I'll close public comment. Any comment during the hearing? Close the hearing. And do we have a motion? Gerald makes a motion to approve special assessment resolution 2021-15 for Johnston. Do I have a second? Carrie seconds. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Gerald?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Nola?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes ma'am.
Lee?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes.
And next, we have Johnson Special Assessment Resolution 2021-16, which is the third step for Johnson. I'll call this hearing open. Do we have any public comments? Hearing none. I'll close public comment. Any other comment during the hearing? Hearing none. I'll close the hearing. And do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the special assessment resolution 2021-16 as a third step for Johnston.
Do we have a second? Gerald seconds. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Carrie?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Nola?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes ma'am.
Lee?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have the sewer rate study. So from our audit, that was done, I believe, March 2020, for the year previous to that, it was suggested by the state that we do a sewer rate study. So I reached out to some contacts on that and started inquiring. I had no idea what kind of price range that would come back as. The proposal that we have in front of us is a large enough number that we should put it out for bids. And thinking that through, I think it would make sense to put it out for bids, which will delay us for one month, but it's still reasonable. It takes about two months to do the sewer rate study. So if we put it out for bids for one month, that still puts us just 90 days away from having it completed, which I think is a reasonable timeframe. Does anyone want to make a motion to put out the sewer rate study for bids?
I make a motion to put out the sewer rate study for bids.
Motion made by Nola. Do we have a second?
I'll second now.
I'll go with Carrie. And any other discussion on that? Hearing none. Let's roll call a vote.
Nola?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes ma'am.
Lee?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Next, we have the road projects contract. So this was a two-year plan that was implemented last year, and this would be the completion of that plan for upgrades to the road, which really delay how long they're going to have to be maintained for. They extend their life. The basic plan on this, the road commission put it together and they recommended, when I first got in office, I inquired what projects they are going, they recommended that we complete step two of this two-step process essentially, and that's what this is. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the local road contract with Stephen County Road Commission for 2021.
Second now.
Carrie seconds. Do we have any other discussion? Hearing none. Let's roll call a vote.
Lori, yes. Carrie?
Yes.
Nola?
Yes.
Renee? Lee?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Next, we have lake view preservation ordinance. So there was a time when around the lakes, there was a 100-foot setback for almost anything that you wanted to do, most activities. So a lot of lake properties would have to go before the zoning board of the hills on a regular basis to do something, to do almost anything. To correct that, in 2019, a lake residential district was made for zoning to handle those, which I think makes a lot of sense. Included as part of that was a line taken from the zoning for Grant Haven about unduly obscuring views of neighboring properties, which I believe is very good in intent. But what it ends up as is it's not enforceable because it's so vague, and it causes a decent amount of conflict. So I've talked to several different municipalities about this, including Grant Haven. The reason they don't have very many problems with it between neighbors is because most of their lakefront is on Lake Michigan, and you have to go through permitting through the state to get approval as well, so it's not just done at their township level. And if, for instance, Fremont, the city of Fremont, along with Dayton Township and Sheridan Church Township, they do zoning together to try to keep it similar, they don't have any new preservation ordinance, which is fairly common. And what we do have in there are objective requirements for setbacks. So a fence has to be swept setback 20 feet from the water level. And then you have to be 40 feet from that, so total of 60 feet for type, other types of fences, higher, six foot, where you can't see that type of thing, or wall construction. And there's different things in place for how close the lake you can build a house compared to someone else's. So there are objective measurements in there as well, which help preserve the view, but in an enforceable and measurable way. And I think it would be reasonable to move in the more objective direction as far as the ordinance is concerned, rather than vague subjective ordinance. That's why it's in there.
I'll make a motion to strengthen the view of the lake residential district zoning with a view toward reducing subjective and vague.
Gerald seconds, do we have any other discussion? Hearing none, let's roll call a vote.
Nola?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes ma'am.
Carrie?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Lori, yes, Jeffrey?
Yes. Next, we do have the business item, which we've heard two people comment on. I did go out and meet with Ron, and I've included, I included a lot of material, because I wanted to have a lot of material to look at, which I have a tendency to do. We have very large packets. But specifically on this, I included our enforcement, various letters and things that have occurred on the property going back for a few years, including pictures that were taken by the township enforcement officer in January, and more recent pictures taken by Ron, the operator of the business, where the tires have been cleaned up. Obviously, the case is, has been presented in both directions, and I think it is a difficult one. And I have, well, I'm gonna catch flack and cover which direction, but I have some flack for being too lenient and giving too much time, and that's definitely true. There's a story about two Chinese generals, and one starts out very lenient and asks for a little more strict over time because it doesn't work. Another one begins more strict and grows more lenient over time. They end up liking the one that grows more lenient over time, and they end up killing the one that grows more strict over time. And I am definitely in danger of being one that ends up getting killed. Nevertheless, I do have a tendency in my personality in that direction, which I believe is part of the good thing about having a board, to check that in my personality. So specifically on this, is, are there any comments, questions, concerns? I'm sure that if we wanted to, Ron would be willing to step up and answer questions if it were to happen.
My question would be, Ron, how long have you owned this property yourself?
Hey, would you mind coming up to lecture around after your turn?
We signed purchase agreements, a quick claim deed, and a transfer of ownership, first week in April of 18, just over three years ago.
And you can work steadily on it, I mean, I don't know, 2019 kind of shut everything down.
Yeah, the broker took a year away from us and shut down everything. Outside of that beforehand, and since, we've been working at approving.
Were you at with the house demolition?
The house, we do have a new, it's a verbal contract, but with a local contractor here, ready to do it. He's just waiting for me, and we're seeking a demolition permit. There's no point in getting that until we went through this after having some conversations. Provided we're allowed to continue, we'll be in tomorrow morning to get that demolition permit. House should be gone within 30 days.
Can you block off the corner so that, so that cars can't be just dropped off in that corner? Can you, is there a way to block it?
Well, I would, I would have to ask the board that question, what I'm allowed to construct there to keep that from happening. I know I can't put any kind of a fence because it's too close to the corner.
Can they do blocks and string? You know, little flags, caution tape?
I wouldn't do anything, honestly, I just, I don't wanna potentially violate another ordinance by constructing something to keep them off there.
I think that is a reasonable inquiry, so on this, we can obviously revoke the permit, and that sets in a chain of motions that is going to be, well, specifically, it'll be detrimental to the business at that location. We could not revoke the permit, and it could just move forward like that. There could be contingencies put in place, too, about clearing up the deed, demolishing the house, in a certain period of time, blocking off the corner, we'd have to work with zoning on that, I have to look at the details specifically.
Okay, the other question was, she had brought up about vehicles possibly leaking fluids out. I mean, is that common, you know, junkyard, don't they leak, don't you guys drain the fluid out before it's just set out to crash it?
If a broken out car comes in leaking, obviously, we have containment measures to, to take care of that. Anything that's stored is either, you know, inspected to make sure it's not leaking, or it's drained of any fluids.
Any other questions? Lauren?
Yes.
Technically, if he doesn't own the property, he can't pull the demolition permit for the house.
Okay. Yeah, where are you at with that?
Yeah, let me comment on that. I mean, I, the only place I don't own the property is in your computer system. I have all the proper paperwork, the signed purchase agreements, the quick claim deed, notarized everything. I have the legal documents proving that I own the property. The only issue is, why it hasn't been recorded, is, I can show you if you'd like, in the quick claim deed, it's filled out, former owners, blah, 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 transferred ownership rights to me, executed by, and the notary signed her name, and stamped it, signed it again. When I took it to the county clerk's office to have it recorded, she says, no, 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 you can't have the notary's name on that line. She was supposed to print in Bradley Semelbar. So we went back to have that fixed, I drove a new one, was gonna have him re-sign it so we could get past that. And Brad's ex-wife Susan, who was also on there and signed, died in between that two-week period. Now there's, they don't know who can take care of that for them, who can sign for Susan. They have been divorced for decades, they had nothing to do with each other. Now, I have since found out that I should, that I should be able to take the original quick claim deed back to the notary, have her write in there, Bradley and Susan Semelbar, because she had already legally witnessed it, and re-sign it, you know, addendum, whatever they do, and should be able to have it recorded without issue.
How long have you known about this issue?
I've been trying to find a way to get it taken care of for well over a year.
So...
I mean, originally, it happened right off the bat, that it couldn't get recorded.
Is the lady that, the person that notarized it, is she unavailable to...
No, she is, I've already been in contact with her, she's more than happy to take care of it.
Okay.
Yeah, so I guess the next question is, how long, when are you gonna get that done? Because if you don't get, if you can't register the deed, you don't own the property. As far as the county's concerned, you don't own that property because you can't register the deed.
I will go see Melissa Bobbi at the notary tomorrow morning.
That's just my concern, because at this point, even though you've gone through the whole process, if the county won't register you, it's still Brett's.
I understand, I understand, and sympathize with her.
And I do, well, I sympathize with you, because I know that you're, you know, you're in a rock and a hard place, so.
Right, and then, I mean, it puts the property in a weird position, because the demolition permit can't be pulled, then the other zoning permits, if we wanted something, if something wants to be done on that corner, you have to pull the zoning permit, because if you're not on the deed, it puts that in a weird position as well. So that ends up being a key thing.
Worst-case scenario, if we can't get that done, I know I can get hold of Brad Semelbar, he'd be happy to pull the demo permit, too. We'll get the house out of there one way or another. I don't know if there's more questions, can I make a couple of other comments of my own?
Hey, go ahead.
Okay, a couple of things that, was thinking so fast when I was first up here, I didn't mention the trailers. Do you have trailers on a property? They're kind of essential to my business. One storage, others, a car trailer, a couple of car trailers. They're all licensed comparable, and we use them. They're not just, there is rubbish. Talk about the ownership, the house. The only other thing I had was kind of a point of order for your meeting. We're discussing this business license, but later on, you want to discuss the enforcement process? You and I talked a little bit about that, because you weren't 100% clear, there's kind of a gray area on how to enforce ordinance violations. So as a point of order, shouldn't we, shouldn't you guys figure that out before we vote whether or not this was enforced properly on me?
I, I can comment a little bit on it now. So it's impossible for me to stop all township operations while I change things, which would be convenient for me, but obviously, that's kind of like fantasy. And so things have to move forward in some way as I adjust things, specifically, we'll cover it more on, when we get to the enforcement process. But I essentially made, there are more letters for enforcement, I made the letters a little nicer, and I tried to make partial compliance more of a possibility. And specifically with adding to the enforcement process, I am in particular looking at a step for requesting mediation and adding a local hearing at the township level before legal is, legal action is taken at the county level. So that's, that's specifically what is, what we're looking at right there. And that'll take, it'll take at least months more to officially put that in place and pass all the votes.
Sure. And just to rebuttal that, I'm not saying that to say I want to get out of this enforcement or anything. These improvements are gonna happen whether you guys came to me or not. We wouldn't even be here today if it weren't for losing the year to COVID, period, it would have already been done. So, I mean, I can't tell you it'll be done tomorrow or next week, but all of your concerns are already being addressed, it will happen in short order.
Any other questions?
Is there a timeframe that's been set up like we did with that other issue that we had?
There has not been a timeframe set up in this case. I mean, we could set one up, it's just an option that I haven't specifically explored in detail. And that could be part of the motion. So at this point, we're looking for a motion to either revoke the license, not revoke the license, revoke the license on contingencies, or not revoke the license on contingencies.
Do you think you could have it done within the next four months? A lot of these, the big issues like the demolition, demolition part of the, getting the deed done, getting all that done, I would hopefully get the deed done in the next 30 days.
I, I can absolutely say the house will be gone within four months. I can't swear to the deed being done, I can swear that within the next 24 hours, I will be seeking every possible way to get it done. But I can't speak on how quickly clerks or lawyers or judges or anything can work.
Especially just to be close. I, I make a motion to not revoke it at this time, but give him four months to get in compliance. And if he's not, then we can revoke his license.
I think we need to be specific about what you want in compliance to be.
Right, because there's a lot.
Because it's very vague.
That is very vague, you're right.
Ninety days to have the house gone.
Okay, ninety days to have the house done. Sarah?
I don't know what the excavator scheduling is during now, and I can have my contract as soon as we have the demo permit. I don't know if he's a week out or three months out. I would have to, you know...
A permit's good for a year.
Yeah, but he's asking to have it done within 90 days. And, you know, I might look.
Having that, ninety days shows commitment.
So I will certainly have the permit one way or another, the demo permit. But that happened within 30 days, because if I can't get the deed done in time, I'll have Brad pull the permit. He's the owner on record in your computer system.
I think that's fair, I think that's very fair. Like Jeff's, not just for Gerald's idea, it's two of ninety days, not revoke.
Not revoke for 90 days, and you're doing a contingency on one specific.
To have the house demolished, and also having the property in his name.
Ninety days. No second to that motion?
And Nola seconds. The motion is to not revoke the license for 90 days, and within that time period to have the house demolished and the deed transferred. Is that correct? Yes. Carrie, is that correct?
Yes.
Both confirmed, do we have any other discussion?
Yes. I thought, I thought it was 90 days to prove intent and have the house demolished in a motion. Not necessarily have it gone, because I hit...
Well, if you have the paperwork, day is gonna be demolished, if you have that in the books, it's gonna be demolished, and that, that shows it's...
But, no, I need that, that's gotta be clear, huh?
We have to be, right, we have to be very specific on that.
I know that he at least has the paperwork that started, even though the house might not be demolished, but at least it's, but then, how much time?
He's correct, he can get a demo permit, but he can't guarantee that accurate excavator's gonna be available within 90 days. That's understood. So if he complies with the demo permit, that's intent.
That, that demo for that.
All right, so we're going with intent demo, as in have the permit?
So it's 90 days, yeah. You won't revoke for 90 days, and he's gonna get the demo permit.
Demo permit and deed transfer?
And property.
And deed transfer.
All right.
Success.
Within the 90 days.
And, and again, I guess the deed transfer needs to be very specific as well. I can show my intent with, you know, appointments with clerk's office for a scheme of town and everything else.
It's not that difficult, actually, my aunt just did a quick claim deed for me. She went to one lawyer, he did all the work, we did nothing, but show up and sign the paper. So it's not, you're making it like a big mountain in this...
Only, only because, the one person who's deed is deceased.
Right, and that's, that's, there's gotta be a way with that certificate, just to show that the person's deceased, I think that would be...
I agree, I, I think it's going to be fairly simple and plain.
I think so, too.
I just don't...
It's figured out that, I understand, it's definitely not that one hurdle, but we gotta, you know, we gotta get this done. And I, if we want to make sure this is successful, we want to see you succeed.
Yeah, bottom line, you pulled my license, I gave me money to make any of this happen.
Exactly. But we're giving an extension to hopefully get, at least show intent. Deed would be the first step, and at least show the paperwork that you got the demolition company coming.
I want to clarify this motion with you, Carrie, and Nola, so that, the motion is that within 90 days now, that is shown intent by having the demolition permit pulled and deed registered. Correct. Within 90 days, so not revoke the license, 90 days, have the demo permit pulled and the deed registered.
90 days, that's three months, that's good.
Okay, all right, Carrie and Nola, both confirm, that's what it is. Any other discussion? Hearing none, let's roll call a vote.
Carrie?
Yes.
Nola?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes ma'am.
Lee?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes. Jeffrey? Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have the land sale request on White Lake and Putnam.
I make a motion to accept the land sale bid, to accept, land sale bids on the two parcels under consideration for a minimum of $7,000 each.
No second to that.
Carrie seconds, any discussion? Hearing none, let's roll call a vote.
Lori, yes, Carrie?
Yes.
Nola?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes ma'am.
Lee?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes. And next, we have the item that we added to the agenda, and this is the sealed bid opening, the Goose Egg Lake, so here is the sealed bid, we received one sealed bid, so came into that, opened this up. This is a purchase agreement for the 2.7 acres. And, here we go. All right, and the price in this purchase agreement is that the buyer offers to buy the property for the sum of $8,700.
What was the minimum before?
There was no minimum.[1789.23]
I think I think we have several ordinances to look at out there.
Yeah, we use like the fifth one, I think.
Yeah. I like collecting other ordinances to compare. I think it's very reasonable. Some places do well and some places struggle with certain things. It's good to compare and take the best. Any anything else? No, I think we'll we'll start working on putting together something for that, so we can look at.
I can either have all together, pick which one we want.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we can make a we can make a piece meal or go with one or the other. So I'll have to put them all together and specifically we're at what we want to bring for it.
Exactly.
Yeah. Great work with my teenager. It's amazing. That's amazing. But anyways, next, internet access. So specifically on internet access, I've been working on having these discussions since I got in office because it's something that everyone here would like. The utility companies, very difficult to P and K with. But I did have a video chat with a regional manager from Comcast after our last working session, and he went over some of the projects and in some various things. I even talked to him about the funds that we don't know exactly what those funds can be used for, that are coming as part of the rescue plan. I talked to him about that. His comments specifically about the approximately $900,000 that were estimated to give was that it's not very much money when you start talking about running lines, which was disappointing to hear. But nevertheless, there are some projects going on from the Rural Digital Opportunity Fund by CCO Holdings and Mercury Wireless. Now, the map in here is black and white, so the one that I emailed to you is much better because it's colored. And it was hard to look at, so I included the website as well, which is the easiest way to look at this, which is fcc.gov forward slash reports desk research slash a bunch of other stuff. And these, there are two different types of projects. I have further got ahold of both of these companies. And in the one area, they are doing some lines. Now, specifically through this this world development program, these projects will be done between 2021 and 2028. And so they're longer term and we don't know when they will actually be done. The companies do not know when they'll actually be done. They're working on still getting the finances together, getting everything approved, so they do not have plans on the projects yet. We're very early stages. But nevertheless, there are some projects going in. Lori and I have talked about various things, and about Gerald, and about how to work out some of this internet access. And the thing with expanding as far as lines go is it is very expensive. So we're thinking not acquire into one company, but we might inquire into more wireless, cell service towers and that type of thing. I think it's worth inquiring into it. We can have the talk. But they might be willing to come here in a way that we can actually make it happen and in a way that the budget can withstand it. We might be able to make investments to make a difference there. So that might be, it'll be more of an ongoing discussion because it will not be a simple short-term thing. It'll be long and we can have a long discussion.
The idea is to help the cell services boost towers, boost the tower bandwidth. By doing that, then people can actually, depending on their plans, make their own their cell phones a hotspot for internet. And AT&amp;T and Verizon are two of the two of the providers that I know of right now that some of their plans include unlimited data on a hotspot. If you can get your cell phone to be your internet, why bother with Comcast and Turner if they're not going to help?
Right.
And we already have existing towers. I don't know where they are. That was my one thing. I'm going to talk to Wes, the assessor, tomorrow and see if he can give me a note of two. That's the only two I know of. I know there are more. But maybe, I mean, it might be worth a discussion with with the cell providers to maybe make, if this is the way to get internet to people that can't get it, then maybe this is the way to go.
I agree.
And it might, and I could, I think it could be cheaper in the long run. We're, because personally, we're, I own property in Mason County with my family, and we're going to put a cell tower up. And we're going to make make it so we can make our phones hotspots. So because one of my nephews actually wants to work remotely from there, so. So there you go. So that's that was that was why that that brought that idea.
It'll definitely be a lot cheaper than laying cable, I know that.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. With the tower, between the tower and the cost of getting the equipment, $1,200 bucks.
Oh, yeah. Just for a small, short distance.
Yes, exactly.
You're not talking half a mile.
Yes, exactly. So that was, so that was why we talked about doing that. So that's something to discuss in the future. It's not set in stone, but that might be a way to go to help the residents.
And there is going to be a phase two to the Rural Digital Opportunity Fund. Comcast was not eligible for some various reason in the first one. And our franchise agreement covers most of the township through Comcast. So definitely an issue. They are not sure if they'll be eligible in the phase two or not. They're looking at it, so we just don't.
Don't hold your breath.
Yeah, I wouldn't. I wouldn't. Anything?
You want to ask a question?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Is are the 5G towers related to that? Because it seems like they are everywhere. But is there one in Golden Township?
That's, that was my, that would be my next question. I need, I want to find out where they are to get to see and then to find out if they're 5G towers.
Because I think the closest 5G tower is going down to South here in Hope.
Exactly. And that's the thing. And if it's just a matter of helping them enhance what they've got, it might, it might be better served to do that and help the residents rather than the money that Comcast is telling us they need to run more lines.
Like what my internet.
Mob reeks.
Right.
Exortion.
Buy a 5G one, yeah.
I am not sure. I'm not sure where the 5G was at. I know there were health concerns about them. I didn't understand it anyways.
That's what we got.
And my initial thought was to have more cable run, but now in talking with the companies, since they're resistant to it and there's such a financial hurdle and they don't seem to be, what we're doing on their own, we can't make up the difference.
That's complicated.
It's a problem. Yeah, it's a problem.
How do we find out where the closest 5G tower is and what we have to do to get them?
It'll be discussions with those companies.
Yeah, we can discuss as soon as they find out where the towers are and find out who the companies are that have them.
And someone had sent me information about T-Mobile had an expansion program going on. I sent them a message saying that we're interested, want to have a conversation, and they never responded. But I believe the towers here are AT&amp;T. And I know in some of the surrounding areas, there are Verizon, so try to have conversations moving forward and see if, see if those can be had. Anything else? Next, we have the enforcement process. So we did hit on this a little bit earlier. Obviously, I not take the office because I love enforcing and for the rest of my life I will still never like enforcing. But I would like to lay out a specific process. So like we talked about before, I can't, I can't stop it. I can't pause everything in the township while we change things for six months or a year. That would, that would be disastrous. It's completely impossible to do, completely impractical. And so I've been trying to manage it as I also get a feel for what would make it better as I've also collected information. I completed the zoning course, the initial zoning course for Citizen Planner through Michigan State University. And in there, they brought up some interesting and unique possibilities with zoning violations going through a hearing process, through the zoning board appeals, since the general regulatory ordinances aren't part of the purview of the zoning boards, then that would have to go through the board specifically. But I liked the idea of having a hearing at a local level if we're going to take legal action like a citation, something like that. So I laid out the potential process in here. And the basic idea is that a complaint triggers a discovery process and inspection. There's a letter, letter stating the violation, but simply stating the violation, not threatening action or anything at that point. There's a follow-up inspection. And it'd be nice to have time frames on these, but it also has to remain somewhat flexible depending on the situation. There's a follow-up inspection, then there's another letter assuming the violation still exists through the process. There's a letter restating the violation and giving options for a request for mediation with the administration, which I think the ability to request mediation is a, is a very good, reasonable step. And then assuming that that doesn't go well, there's a cutoff date. So after mediation request response date, there's a letter issued summoning them to a hearing before the zoning board appeals for zoning violations or the township board for general regulatory ordinances. And then if they were found to be in violation there by the boards through the administration recommendation, they approved it, then the board issues an approval or denial of recommendation for legal action for injunctions, citations, something like this. Now, it's quite a lengthy process. And I will say that quite a number of the conversations I have had about enforcement is someone that's put up with a problem for a while until they get to a breaking point and then they report it to the township. And then the conversation is something like, I want this taken care of right now, immediately. And I've rebutted that to a large extent with you don't want me to have the power, which I do right now, but you don't want me to have the power to move on those types of things to to issue a citation, take someone to court so fast. It's nice that there's a process in place so people can try to rebut this now that the the population is very split on that issue. But I think having a process in place, and we could shorten this up so it's faster or we can lengthen it out so it's longer. Right now, I get three-letter system. And so it's a little bit longer than when I came in, but it's a little bit shorter than what this would be. But this does escalate a little more quickly because we don't have the hearings in place. So it's definitely something to talk about and debate. I don't want to do it over a short period of time. I don't want to just implement something off the cuff that I that I write up in one day. But I can start from an administrative position. I can essentially, if we're taking some sort of action, I can appeal it to the board so I can put the process in place and start going through zoning board appeals, for hearing that type of thing before we have fully implemented and going through the process of amending the ordinance. So thoughts, comments, ideas? I know that's quite a lot.
Did you, when, in that I'm reading through this, in the whole process that you're proposing, do you have a timeframe? I mean, that's what people are going to ask. I mean, how, how long is this going to take? If I've got a complaint, my neighbors got junk in the air. How long is your process going to take before something happens? Whether it's they did, they get, they actually do what they're supposed to do to clean it up or something actually happens where it gets cleaned up? Because that, people are looking at there, you know, everybody wants assistance, they want a structure.
The timeframe, the timeframe is more difficult, I believe, than initially appears. So because if you have some sort of minor violation where the person's let some garbage accumulate and then they get a complaint, they can go out there, pick it up and throw it away. It's not a huge deal. If you get someone that's technically been in violation for three decades, because we get that, we get that a lot because we're complaint driven. So you get someone that's been in violation for three decades, no one's complained, they get a new neighbor, someone in the neighborhood just decides to complain, a lot of times a feud starts. So they have a specific, they have a personal disagreement, so then they start reporting each other. That's, that's extremely common.
Yeah.
Very unfortunate. I would like to emphasize people not to do that, but nevertheless, happens a lot. So you end up with this person that's been in violation for 30 years, and now if you require them to clean it up in two weeks.
It's not realistic.
It's very, right, very difficult. So the timeframe thing, I think, is difficult because we kind of, we need timeframes in place. But if we make them all fairly tight timeframes, it makes it impossible for some people unless we have a partial compliance thing, which I have implemented right now. I essentially have the zoning force here kind of, he refers back to more of an official sending letter, but essentially sending thank you letters when partial compliance happens and stating that we would like them to continue. And that just happens to be our compliance.
And I agree with that, that the partial compliance, but people have to realize that there's structure.
Right.
They're looking for structure, whether we, whether they know it or not. So if we have a timeframe, but we're flexible, they still are going to, I mean, I'm not saying that, okay, you know, you're going to have to, each letter should have a timeframe.
Right.
Each, each, each step in the process should have a timeframe. If something needs to happen and we need to be flexible, we can do that, but.
If we have a generally accepted timeframe, the timeframe is set, but then in cases, the people could come, well, especially with having mediation steps with the administration, that would allow a flexible amount of time according to the context, according to the situation.
Well, the thing is, if you don't have some, if you don't have something that, that a beginning structure.
Right.
Then there's no, then there's no compliance at all because nobody's going to.
It's willy-billy.
No, whatever. Yeah, whatever. We don't want that. We, we want to have structure, but we do want to be flexible where we need to be. I agree. Somebody that's had stuff there for 30 years is not going to be able to get everything out in two weeks.
Right. Puts them in probably an impossible situation.
Exactly. But I mean, and I, and I know you don't have it here, but I think that's something when you're putting it together, there should be, it should be there. At least a, a general timeframe that can be worked from.
I think that's very reasonable. And I would like to mention here that, so MTA, Michigan Townships Association, recommends not having a specific process in place, which I don't like. Their, the reason for not having, for not wanting a specific process in place is it allows an extreme amount of flexibility. So I, I'm the legal agent for the township and it gives me this immense amount of flexibility. And I think too, too much, too much flexibility, too much power for the position. So even though the MTA doesn't recommend it, I would like to move forward with putting a process in place anyway.
Yeah, I agree. We need a process in place.
Yep.
It's, it's, it's required. If, well, for example, if there's, let's say, two different families going out, something going on, and there isn't a process and you give this family X amount of time and then this family more time, we're going, wait, you know, if they ever compare notes, they go, well, well, he gave you how much time? I got 90 days.
Right.
So now we're having an issue with not being fair.
Right.
And not, and not being impartial with this, with the process in place, it puts everyone on the same playing field. It comes to responsibilities, having them taken care of.
Correct. And then we have to do it correctly, otherwise it puts us in violation of due process.
Right.
But I think there should be a process for due process.
I agree.
So this is something that we're going to come back to and maybe have like a meeting for just this?
Yeah.
We'll probably at least.
Just, just this alone, I think.
We'll probably at least come back to it a few times. I'm not sure if we'll need to set up a separate meeting because we can, I'll try to stick with this, but I can try to make a meeting very light on decision items and we can go heavier on discussions.
Even, even you get pissed on and they judge that a week or works, the work session dates and times, but even the hour before a regular meeting, if we use that as a work session, maybe that's what we do.
Well, and I, I think in general, if we go in this direction, we don't have six hearings in one medium, this type of thing, depending if it parses down a little bit, we might be able to get away from having work sessions completely and just have discussion items at the end. That's, that's my idea with the way that I drafted it set up today, is that we'll.
I got probably ninety days. So now we're having an, an issue with not being fair. And not, and not being impartial with this, with a process in place. It puts everyone on the same playing field. When it comes to responsibilities, having them taken care of.
Right. And then we have to do it correctly, otherwise it puts us in, in violation of due process. But I think there should be a process for due process.
I agree.
So this is something that we're going to come back to and maybe have like a meeting for just this?
Yeah. We'll probably at least.
Just, just this alone, I think.
We'll probably at least come back to it a few times. I'm not sure if we'll need to set up a separate meeting because we can, I'll, I'll try to stick with this, but I can try to make a meeting very light on decision items and we can go heavier on discussions.
Even, even, maybe it's not a major, by the way, the works, the work session dates and times. But even the hour before a regular meeting, if we use that as a work session, maybe that's what we'll do.
Well, and I, I think in general, if we go in this direction and we don't have six hearings in one mediumistic thing, depending if it parses down a little bit, we might be able to get away from having work sessions completely and just add discussion items at that. That's, that's my idea with the way the agenda is set up today, is that will eliminate.
Well, that would be, that's what I was saying. You know, and, and, yeah, I don't see having another meeting with six hearings in a, in a year or two or something.
Hopefully not in the next three years, six months, one week and four days. Anything else on enforcement? Food trucks. So specifically on this, it was, it was brought up with a person that I know. They are interested in potentially doing a food truck park or just food trucks in general. Now, I inquired into a number of municipalities and many, many more than are listed here and heard more feedback. And, and I have included here the one that Norton Shores is looking at passing, the one from Traverse City and the one from Coopersville. And I have, I have a few more and I have more on the way. And over the last few years, one of the worries about food trucks is that food trucks were going to compete and put brick and mortar restaurants out of business. But as far as what's actually occurred, and I was talking about this with Traverse City about their zoning, because they're huge in food trucks, they love them. They have found that they don't. They're, they're a different experience for a different person or at a different time. And so they don't end up competing, they end up complementing each other. In that brick and mortar businesses launch food trucks to try to get more business in other areas because then they can travel. And people that are looking at starting brick and mortar restaurants end up launching food trucks to test the feasibility and viability of that type of food in that specific market. So it essentially ends up being something like a restaurant incubator for the area, which is solid. And on this, I, it's important that the opportunity to succeed is also the opportunity to fail in business. So I don't think we should be deciding exactly who should be succeeding and failing. We should just be allowing for the potential for the opportunity for people to take the shot. I've included the three ordinances as well. Obviously have to look at it more over time. And I will bring it to the board in the next meeting to push to the planning commission to start reviewing, putting it together.
I read through all of them and Norton Shores is, I like, there's a lot.
Okay.
The simple Traverse City, I thought was like, wow, really? You know, it's like, it was just like.
Traverse City is a lot bigger and that's why, that's why your unit is a lot bigger. I, I, yeah, I read through that. I really liked it, but I think I'll prove it. It is a very good, Traverse City is a very good.
I have one from Luddington too that's less than a page.
See? And that's frankly cynical, as much as Luddington.
I just got that.
Don't we have a food truck right here in Muskegon? That's right there downtown. They opened a restaurant too. They started a food truck. But unless, are there, are there barbecue or something?
Oh, we have bone ends and wet homes. I contacted Wet Home. So Wet Home doesn't have a specific food truck ordinance. They, it falls under their solicitor's license, which is $250 a fee for the year, and that's how they. Yeah, so there's a decent amount to review there. We'll do over a period of time. Anything else on food trucks? Nothing on food trucks? I will make one public comment, I've opened a public comment section here because I just recently received this information. But the lake-level outlet device on Twin Lake, which I, I like the fact that now working on maintaining the channels. I'm working on putting a process in place for that and figuring it out. And the lake-level outlet device will be working for the first time in a very long time. We're not sure how long. But I contact, I was in contact with the engineers today. And because the manufacturer has not been able to keep up over the last year with some things, they're doing their delay by about three months. So instead of right now having the lake-level outlet device replaced and working properly, we're looking more like the end of December. And so it'll be the same way it's been for the last at least handful of years, which technically it's six inches too low for summer levels as it is, and it probably does leak a little bit. Now, we've been at way too high water levels in the previous years, so flooding's been the issue, not the other way. Uh, so we're seeing those levels go down. Now, when we checked in the end of March, when we made a Twin Lake survey, the water level's right where it's supposed to be. But by the end of the summer, that device will be working properly and replaced, or at least that's what I'm told. That's the idea. Any other public comment? Yes, we have a couple. If you would like to come up to lectern, pay an address.
Hi, Richard Graham, 2525 East White Lake, Carolina. I'm on North Lake on the north side. A question on the lake preservation ordinance. Has that already been written?
The changes?
Or did we just pass a new one tonight?
No. So what, what we did was we passed a motion for the planning commission to review it. So now it's going to go to the planning commission. The planning commission is going to look over it. They're going to go through their process of changing an ordinance. And it will eventually, after a number of months, come back to the board to be passed in a new way. But that, that style has not specifically been created.
Okay, sounds good. So need to go to the planning commission and see what's happening.
Correct. The next few months, yes.
All right. I, I've had a concern because it came up about eighteen months ago, maybe two years ago, about sheds, I'm going to call it, on the lakeside. Somebody's been laying sheds. And suddenly there was a proposal to eliminate sheds on the lakeside. Well, there's thirty-nine, well, two years ago, there was thirty-nine sheds on the lakeside on North Lake alone. Okay. And the nice thing about sheds is that's where you put your skis, your towels, everything else. Instead of laying on a beach and bragging away and everything like that. And at that time, they just said, let's forget about this. That's, you know, crazy. I can see if somebody went and built two straight sheds. And the other question was on the Blue Seg Lake property that's sold. There wasn't a name given?
I assume that there is on here. The buyer's initials are put as AA. And the name might be buried in the text somewhere where Anthony Abbot.
It is. Also submitted a bid last month. What was the bid last month?
The last month's bid.
It wasn't the last month.
Yeah, there was, but it wasn't acceptable.
It wasn't acceptable.
It wasn't acceptable because it didn't meet the minimum. I can't remember what it was.
Seven thousand, I think, seven, seven thousand.
Eighteen.
I think it was in the teens.
Eighteen, was it that night?
Yeah, there was eighteen-five. That's just so you know. I didn't bid on the property. I would have liked to, but I'm, I'm only fifty percent of the household, okay? Maybe only forty-nine percent. The bid today was eight thousand.
Eight thousand seven hundred.
Eight thousand seven hundred.
Ten thousand lost.
And this individual owns a whole bunch of property around here and one other piece of property keeps it landlocked, okay? Unless you drive a boat across the lake, then it's not landlocked. So the person pretty much knew he was guaranteed the property because he requested it himself to be put up.
He originally requested, correct.
Okay. So last month's bid was eighteen-five and today it was eighty-seven hundred, okay? Knowing that no one else was going to bid, okay, because of all the, you know, the, at first you said it couldn't be built on. It can be built on, assuming we can get a permit, easement and stuff like that, okay? You have the right to reject every bid, even if it met the minimum. There was no minimum. I think you should have rejected that bid. Last month it was eighteen-five. You just lost ten thousand dollars for this condition.
Jesse McBurnett, 5478 Suroh. Had the same question, the Blue Seg Lake property. Really, it wasn't a question. I guess it was more of a statement that I was here last month and heard that the minimum was set at forty thousand, which was probably high, and you got a bid for eighteen. And then somehow we have a suggestion to set a minimum bid of zero. And, and everybody voted yes on it, sitting up there, which first of all, horrible idea. Second of all, I agree, votes yes. And then we get a bid for eighteen thousand dollars. Come a guy that just gave us a bid last month for eighteen thousand. That's my money too.
Yeah, you're right. Yeah.
You're right.
Hey, you guys, anybody want to put their property for a zero millim? Any takers? I'd like to buy two property. Sharpen up, please. Any other public comment?
Jim Prosser, I wanted to say thank you. I'm hopeful and, and excited and optimistic about you guys being open to considering my, my, uh, wanting to build in my property. And also I won't do that on the next, my property. I won't like offer you a few thousand dollars. I don't want to go over its worth. Thank you very much for considering me.
Any other public comment?
Robin Lindsay, twenty-seven thousand five hundred. Um, on the, talking about timeframes, people complying, what, what's the status with Mr. Hobby?
I haven't checked in with Hobby, so I believe that date is August eighteenth.
Is that, we put that out to the requirement?
We have given six months. He hasn't until August fourth.
August fourth?
Yes.
Okay.
So at this point, he has made no attempt to correct anything at this point?
I don't hang out up there. I don't know.
I mean, he had to get permits. He had to, he is not, to this point.
We have not received a zoning permit for the work area.
Just wondering because, you know, you talk about leniency and giving him more time. He had years already and it was a court judgment. And you decided to give him that extra time, spend money to have that judgment extended. The attorneys had to get involved with that, I'm sure. And that was, I complained then that, you know, you're going to give him six more months. You're going to turn around, spend more money to turn around and have him removed or, you know, to force him to, whatever you're going to do. I don't believe he's ever going to comply. I don't think he'll ever be able to. But once again, you know, the timeframe, um, like you said, it's been going on three years. And then you just talked about, oh, you know, when you, when neighbors complain about other neighbors, whichever their situation, you know, they shouldn't have to wait three years and get a court judgment and then have it overturned and give him more time when there's never been any, um, type of proof that he's even making the attempt. My other, um, comment would have been, I know during the work session, you talked about the camping. People camping on, you know, around the lakes, camping in their yards, whichever. You made the comments. You probably go back on the tape and listen to it about, you know, concerns about, and all of you made the concerns about, you know, the waste, you know, the things that people, you know, might don't or whatever. But then it goes back to Mr. Hobby, he's been doing that for years. And no, you weren't concerned about that when we talked about, like I said. You wouldn't let me live in my house if my septic was leaking all underground or in the lake or whatever, but, you know, in, in the neighbor's well water. But, you know, Mr. Hobby's been doing this for a long time. And it just, it seems like such a contradiction all the time. You know, that it's, you don't want one person doing it, but it's okay for the other to do it and you just keep giving them more time. But I just wanted to see what Mr. Hobby's, you know, what progress he's made. Doesn't look like there has been any.
I think that'll go very negative in the very near future, so.
Well, we kind of told, said that at the beginning, but, you know. Evidently, we all have a point to prove, I guess. I don't know.
And a lot more money. No matter how that goes, that'll cost a lot more money. I'm, I'm very confident. Any other public comment? The land sale policy, we will work on in the future. I'm working on some actually quite exciting things that are not fully worked out yet for the township to see quite a bit of increased income, uh, as well as it'll benefit the county also, so it'll be mutually beneficial. And we're working out those details now, back from something that was implemented back in nineteen eighty-seven. But I want to, I want to get more details before I bring the information to everyone because right now it's just something that I've been verbally working on for the last handful of months. And so in the, the reason I didn't vote for putting that up for bid for the zero millim is because moving forward with this, I would like to have a, a consistent policy of having stuff for the true cash value or the appraisers' value or that number minus a certain percentage, something, something fairly consistent with those properties. But we will hopefully be seeing a lot more land sales in the near future. Any other comment? I don't see none. I will take a motion for adjournment. Noel makes the motion. Do it in a second.
Amen.
Any discussion? None? All in favor, say aye. All opposed?